Rule call.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Ms. Blanchard.
Here.
Ms. Gallagher.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Strebe.
Here.
Okay, so now the first thing we have is adoption of the agenda. So everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda and the addendum. Does anybody have any corrections to the agenda?
I'd like to pull item eight C for a separate rule call vote please, please.
Okay, so eight D, which one?
C.
C, oh, okay, eight C. All right, eight C. And also, under the superintendent's consent agenda, D I, Sharon Strebe will be four hours a day, not three and a half hours a day. So we do need to change that.
Which one, say that, which one it is again, please?
Yeah, D, under the superintendent's consent agenda, D I, and for the Sharon Strebe's adjusted contract, it'll be four hours a day rather than three and a half. Yeah. Anything else? Okay, so we have the agenda and the addendum, and we're pulling to talk separately about eight C. So I have a motion to approve that. So move.
Second.
Rule call.
Mr. Strebe.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Um, yes.
Ms. Blanchard.
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher.
Yes.
Okay, now we have a time where we get to recognize some of our outgoing board members, and we just want to also thank Dr. Hayward for her work while she's been here in the district. And I have a couple awards for the board members, and I would just like you to listen to this quote that I found that I thought is appropriate for this time. "Don't judge each day by the harvest you reap, but by the seeds that you plant." And I tell you, these people have planted a lot of seeds. Patty's been on the board for eight years, and Charlie and Jen have both been on for 12 years. And it's a lot, and it's very commendable for the work they've done in that time period. So, Mr. Blanchard, on behalf of the school district, present you this award for your 12 years of service to the Frederight Town School District.
Thank you.
Charlie, on behalf of the school district, we want to congratulate you and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, sir.
And Patty, on behalf of the school district, we want to thank you and congratulate you for your ser- your eight years of service.
Thank you so much.
All right, now we have the approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of November 16th, 2021, and the special board meeting on December 7th, 2021. Does anybody have any corrections to those? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Mr. Blanchard.
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strebe.
Yes.
Okay, and now we have some special commendations, and these are all from our busy kids that we have that are so successful all the time. And I have the motion to approve the fall student accomplishments. For spelling bee winners, Gwen Lavin for fifth grade, Izzy Broerman for sixth grade, Addison Keener, seventh grade, Caitlin Roddy, eighth grade. National Honor Society inductees, Gabby Daniels, Xavier Platt, Madison Bender, Isis Chaffey, Elsa Home, Angela McMahon, Shelby Oswalt, Laney Winger, Silas Home, Isaiah Van Slike, Destiny Bluebaugh, Abigail Kraft, Anastasia Kraus, Macy Mandillo, Zane Stricker, and Bethany Wingit. Boys Cross Country Team District Runner-Up, team that took eighteenth place at the OHSAA State Meet. Josh Alexander was second team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference. Owen Crable, second team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference. Xavier Platt, second team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference and All Academic Team. Noah Smith, second team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference. Girls Country Team Champion of the Knox Morrow Athletic Conference. Coach of the Year, Bob Geiger, first team and twentieth place at the OHSAA State Meet, Elsa Home. First Team in the Athletic Conference, All Academic Team for the Knox Morrow and the OHSAA State Qualifier, Natalie Van Meter. First Team Morrow Athletic Conference, Taylor Brown. Second Team, Taylor Thorne. Second Team, Kelsey Scott. And Casey Brooke, all of the Knox Morrow Athletic Conference. And moving on to football, we have Cade Carpenter, first team of the Knox Morrow Athletic Conference, honorable mention all district and first team all North Central Ohio. Xavier Mullins, first team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference, honorable mention all district and first team all North Central Ohio. Teagan Rule, second team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference, first team all district, first team all North Central Ohio, honorable mention Division VI all Ohio. J.J. Grinnell, honorable mention and for the Knox Morrow Athletic Conference and all district and second team all North Central Ohio. Trevor Jobs, honorable mention all district, second team all North Central Ohio. Lucas Herbst, second team all North Central Ohio. Cameron Kobel, honorable mention all North Central Ohio. Anna McFerran, second team all North Central Ohio. And Zach Luckmeyer, All Academic Team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference. Boys Golf, Ian Muka, first team Knox Morrow. Will Strebe, first team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference. Alex Spalding, All Academic Team Knox Morrow Athletic and honorable mention in the Knox Morrow Athletic. Brady Lester, honorable mention of the KMAC. Girls Golf, Ava Parker, first team. Arien Redalaza, second team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference. Emma Reed, second team and All Academic Team for the KMAC. Darian Hammond, honorable mention. Hannah Bressi, honorable mention. Volleyball, Lindsay Bosart, first team Knox Morrow Athletic Conference and first team all district. Audrey Bowden, first team KMAC and second team all district. Grace Sykes, second team KMAC, honorable mention all district. Katie Mull, honorable mention KMAC, and Laney Partington, All Academic of the Knox Morrow Athletic Conference. So, I have a motion to approve all of those. Rule call.
Mr. Strebe. Ms. Blanchard, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
That's all right, yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Strebe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and next we'll have the treasurer's report and consent agenda.
About six B tied on the addendum.
Six, ah, okay. Yeah, I guess I didn't, uh, six B is special commendation, okay. The, to approve the Yamaha Clavanova keyboard to the Frederight Town High School instrument department valued at $1,000 from Stan Miller. I have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Ms. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Strebe.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes, Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Okay, now, we'll go to the treasurer's report, the treasurer's consent agenda.
First, I'm going to apologize, still a little squeaky, and I can't hear real well. The expenses did exceed revenue during the month of November, I, 858,000. There were several large one-time expenditures. We had the, we had two bond payments. One of the bond payments was 405,000, that's an annual bond payment which we paid off in 2023. And the Huntington OASBO bond payment, which was 105, and that'll be paid off in 2026. We had U.S., U.S. Bank equipment. We got new copiers, U.S. Bank wrote us a check, and then we took that money and then paid off the copiers with that check. They bought out the contract, so it wasn't in and out of funds, but that was 98,000. We had staff T-shirts. The Central Ohio fuel purchases of our fuel, that was almost 9,000. And our monthly copier expense of 6,000, and then food service, right around 15,700. Out of that, those expenses came up to 645,000 out of the 858,000 of the monthly expenditures. Those were the big items for the month of November. I also provided a, what I would call a true days cash, it's how many days the school can operate. If the doors say we would go out of business, we would shut down, how many days we could continue to pay everyone's salaries and to pay off all of our bills if anything unforeseen would happen to the district. How you figure this up is you take your total, what is on cash at the beginning of each fiscal year. You divide that by how many days are in the year. So you take that total, divide it by 365 days, that gives you a daily rate of how much everything will be. Then that will give you your number of true days cash as well. So out of your total days of expenditures, at the end of 2022, this fiscal year, we could operate at 294 days. The standing rule is right around six months, if possible. About 180 days that you want to have true days cash on hand. We are fortunate that even through 2026, this is for the projected forecast, that as of the end of 2026, we could have close to 297 days of true days cash still on hand. The large part of that will be due to the fact that we're getting more state funding. The per pupil amount went from 6,010 dollars, and we're currently at 7,500 per student. So that changed a lot of our funding. We're no longer on a cap or a guarantee. We are strictly a, truly a formula district. So with, even with the formula district, we have that on our, on our side, and then we're also at the 20 mil floor, which also generates new revenue when property taxes, when we go into a revow, which will happen in two years because we just went through a revow, and that's every three, and then the reappraisal is every six. So we will be going through that again in a couple more years. So with us being at the 20 mil floor, it also generates new revenue. With that being said, with everything, we are fortunate that we have a good amount of students that are open enrolled to our district. We currently, the adjusted open enrollment is 196.9. With those students, if we would say eliminate open enrollment altogether, the district would stand to lose 1.2 million dollars within the next year because open enrollment is based on previous year's calculation, and with the new state funding, it's a one-year look back. So if we would eliminate open enrollment, we would lose the 1.2 million, but then say two years or three years down the road, we decide to bring opener, open enrollment back up, at that point, we would have to have almost 600 kids open enroll to our district to get us back to where our funding would be at this time because of the look back period. So when, say, three years down the road, we do open enrollment again in 2026, they would have to look back at 2025 if they didn't have any. Then they'd look back at 2024 and so forth. So to get us back to where we are today, we would almost have to triple the number of students that are enrolled currently to get us back to that funding level. Or the other possibility would be to go for a levy. If we would do a levy, it would be almost a six mil levy that we would have to do to generate 1.2 million dollars of that lost revenue. So, um, in short, I know that was a lot. Open enrollment is very beneficial to this district. We get close to the 1.2 million dollars per year of open enrollment money. And with the new state funding formula, because we are heavily formula-based and not capped or on the guarantee, that keeps generating revenue for this district. So this year, the per pupil amount is 7,500. Next year, it'll jump to 7,600. So those students, they generate 7,600 per dol- you know, per student, that's what it generates to bring those kids here. So if they leave the district, that's an automatic loss of revenue to the district. And the other part I have is my auditors currently here. They came on November 30th. The audit is going very well. They pulled several payables, they pulled just, probably pulled 35 contract employees, you know, just to go through. And today they did all of self-insurance, and everything is going well, and I don't foresee anything happening. But I will keep you updated as the audit continues, but as of right now, everything looks great.
Good.
Yeah, and that's, that's all I have.
Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Of A and B? Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda eight A and B?
So move.
Second.
Rule call.
Mr. Strebe.
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we'll move on to eight C to talk separately about. And it is a motion to approve the job description of assistant to the treasurer. So we have, um, we were able to forward that to you at that agenda meeting, and were you able to take a look at that?
It is yesterday.
Okay, okay. And so, so there's been some question behind all of this, assistant to the treasurer and reconfiguring of the treasurer's office and all of that. And so we just wanted to give a little bit of background because there's been a couple people that have been emailing me specifically asking how much input Heather had to all of this. And I, I did try to call Mr. Bellman, even though, I don't know if you saw the Facebook post this morning, but he said I didn't return his email. Well, that's because I tried to call him to talk to him in person. I left a message on his voicemail, but he has not returned my call. So anyway, but on December 3rd, or no, let me back up. December 2nd, at about 3:35 in the afternoon, I got a call from Heather, and she said she had some bad news. And she said that Don Campbell had turned in her resignation today, which was December 2nd. And I asked why, and she said that she didn't want to elaborate, so I said, you know, that's, that's fine. Heather said that she got another job, but she never mentioned where. She said that Don would possibly take some time off that was built up, but she would get payroll done for December 20th of 2021. Her last day would probably be December 17th, but, you know, at that time, I'm not sure they were sure what day she was going to take off and all that. Heather said she was very nervous about this and would like to post the position on OASBO tomorrow. I told her that I would call the rest of the board to give them the news. So I did that, and I talked to them. Then, at 5:09 PM that night, I got a call from Dr. Susan Hayward informing me that she got a job offer, that she would like to start January 3rd, and she wanted to set up a special meeting either Tuesday, December 7th, or Wednesday, December 8th, for the board to release her from her contract. She wanted this information to be kept strictly confidential and did not even want her office to find out. So that was the calls I got. So then, so then I called the board again. And we tried to figure out what would be the best time to meet on such short notice. So we all were able to come up with December 7th at 7:30 PM. So then on December 3rd, um, in the morning, at 8 o'clock on my way to work, I called Heather back. And I told her that after informing the board that night, last night, their recommendation was not to post the job description on OASBO yet. She was shocked, and she wanted to know why. And I told her that I thought that we wanted to try to make the position just one 40-hour position and see if Lanay wanted to do that. Heather said that Lanay only wanted to work part-time because of her grandchildren. Heather said that this was not something we could just sit on. I asked her if she could do payroll, but she said that it had been 10 years since she had done it. She didn't want the school employees to be mad at her for doing it incorrectly because there was new software and all that type of stuff that Don was more familiar with. And then she asked me if she could just send me Don's job description, so I told her sure. Then about 10 o'clock on that Friday, she sent me the job description. She said it will take at least two months or more to fill, or to try to find a person for this position, or to teach the position, to train them. When I reviewed the job description she sent me, it said it was for 40 hours. So I asked her, I said, how many hours has Don worked? She said it was actually 30, and then she had actually made a mistake, but she would correct that. And then, so she asked me if everything looked okay, and I said, yes. And then a little bit later, she said that she was nervous about finding someone. Sonya and I were both anxious because it's hard to find and trust somebody, and I just told her, I know, it's not going to be easy. So about 3 o'clock that afternoon, she asked me if she could post it on OASBO, and I said, well, say 30 hours, and she said, yes, sir, and I said, go ahead and post it. So that's just a little bit of background information, letting the community know that I did have conversations with Heather. And these guys probably want to chime in some too, but the thing about it is, is that we've been talking for years about reconfiguring the treasurer's department, and it just seemed like when Don resigned, it was a good time to do it.
As far back as 2008, when I was not on the board but a community member, cuts were being made then, you were still employed then. Cuts were, were made that impacted students directly in negative ways. And so it was suggested then that we look at exempted staff and administrative staff before cutting direct services to students. Back in 2017, when we had our work session, Heather, I think you were on the phone with us that day.
I was on the phone.
Yeah.
2020.
It was 2020.
It was 2020, yeah.
20 on the 17th, March 17th.
Yeah, we had a work session that day, and we were considering at that point, looking at shifting and things like that. And we discussed that then. None of us were interested in making a shift with current employee, employees in place. So when we had our conversation on December 7th, we talked about the number of hours two people put in in the treasurer's office. So we basically are moving from a 50-hour, two positions, 50 hours, to 40-hour position. The reason I wanted to pull the job description is, this is me talking personally, I don't care how the job is filled, how the 40 hours gets distributed, that's what we voted on, was the 40 hours. It makes sense if, if we want to attract more, possibly more people to the job market as job seekers to have a full-time 40-hour position with full-time benefits because my understanding is that a four-hour employee doesn't get full-time insurance benefits. Because my understanding is that a four-hour employee doesn't get full-time insurance benefits unless you're a bus driver, which is, that is your full-time equivalent, see? And then, um, however, those, um, responsibilities and duties are distributed would be up to you, Heather.
And then I also wanted to say too, since you weren't able to be in that special meeting for extenuating circumstances, I did debrief the board on all my conversations with Heather and told them that she said that she didn't think that Laney would want a forty-hour position because of her grandchildren. So that, they were informed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's kind of why we pulled this job description. We looked at it yesterday, you and I, together with Don. And I showed you where, what I had done was look through the OASBO description and the one that Todd originally had, which was essentially the same thing, uh, needs to be board approved, but, um, there was a lot of redundancy, a lot of repetition in that one. So what I tried to do was take what you gave us, or what was posted on OASBO and condense things and then added that section seven with A, B, C, and D for the accounts receivable, accounts payable. If you are not satisfied with this job description and don't feel comfortable recommending it to us as a board, we need to hear from you, so that we can vote with an informed decision. So that's why I pulled, um, that, asked to have that pulled for this meeting.
There's a lot more to Laney's job than just accounts payable. She does all of the college course reimbursements. She does all of the fuel receding, all of the fuel inventory. She does all of the energy inventories and all of the energy re, reporting to Tony Van Gundy, who is our, part of our co-op. She does, I, I, payables may seem like a small job, but it's not. She, the four hours that she's there, she is busy from eight AM to noon. And like today, she stayed over because there was things that she needed to get done. When the, when both people, when Don and Laney are both there, I'm gonna try not to cry, so I'm sorry. I couldn't ask for better staff, and they're invaluable to me. They make, it's a seamless operation in that office, and they are phenomenal at what they do, and I would be lost without either one of them. I understand what you guys want to do, I understand, I, I do. When people leave, you do, you consolidate, you, you reduce down, I get it. This affects not only my coworker, but she's my friend. And that breaks my heart for how long she's been here, that if she doesn't take the eight-hour, I have to say goodbye to her. That, that, if she doesn't take the forty-hour week job, Laney doesn't have a job. That's how I'm taking it.
Jim, you wanna speak up there?
You mean, to the conversation, or, so?
Am I misunderstanding that?
You mean, a misunderstanding, which part?
If Laney doesn't take the forty-hour week job, then she doesn't have a job.
Well, I think that's kind of what Patty was speaking to, am I correct there?
Yeah, we, Jim, I don't wanna say what you said on the phone. You had a conversation.
You're talking about the conversation that Todd and I had.
Yes.
After the meeting. So, we didn't want there to be any information misconstrued. So after the meeting last Tuesday, Todd and I called Laney and had a conversation with her to make sure she heard directly from us what the board was thinking, what our ideas were, okay? We made it very clear that she did not have to apply to keep her own job, to keep this job. We made it known what our thoughts were, okay? We wanted her to hear it from us instead of hearing it through some other avenue. My perception was, is that was well-received, or at least appreciated, that we took the effort and time to do that. Not necessarily what was being, um, relayed, but, but she felt like, at least, again, my impression, correct me if I'm wrong, that she appreciated us letting her know, she needed to think about it, she needed to decide what she wanted to do. And she asked me this question, would she have to apply for the job if she was interested? And we assured her, no, she would not, the job was hers if she wanted.
The forty-hour week?
Correct. So, I guess, did that answer your question, or?
The statement, excuse us, we're having a meeting. She, he also said to her, I'm not interested in, we're not interested in hiring her.
Absolutely.
That's not our goal here, so.
We don't want to eliminate a person, at all.
We, we're essentially reducing the hours from fifty to forty. So however that gets configured, however you recommend that and split that up, if there's job sharing, if there's a way to flex it, however you want to do that moving forward, there were no dates put on here, except that we're changing from a fifty-hour to a forty-hour description and, fifty to forty hours. If you want one person, you can do it that way. If there's a job share option, do it that way. It's, so. We want to clarify that, but if this is not the job description that you want, or that you're satisfied with or that you want to recommend, we've pulled it and we need to hear directly from you about the job description. So do you want to, um, take that out of your consent agenda?
Yes, please.
So my motion is to, um, pull and resend, um, that item from, um, the treasurer's agenda, item eight C.
Okay. I'll have a second.
Sorry.
Okay, rule call?
Which one?
Oh.
Mr. Charlie.
Charlie.
Yeah.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Strebe?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McClay?
Yes.
Okay, um, so now let's move on to superintendent's report and consent agenda.
Thank you, good evening. Um, some items on the superintendent agenda tonight are to approve the updated service by for gifted. And the reason that has been updated from last night is to include the addition of the Iowa and cog add assessments. There is also a motion for a resolution, and this is from Senate Bill two-two-nine. So there's a resolution that states whereas the Fredericton Local School Board authorizes the district to continue use of the remote learning plan for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year due to the recent passage of Senate Bill two-two-nine. So what that means is that they passed the bill, and it's a local decision. However, the Ohio Department of Education gave school districts until tomorrow to submit a resolution. And so ODE is basically saying submit the resolution in the event that you want to use it, because if you do not have it submitted by the fifteenth, then you cannot move forward with a, um, remote learning plan. So we are working together as an administrative team, looking at our remote learning plan from last year, which would be a continuation, and looking at the pros and cons of that platform that we were using. And then it's a local decision on if we want to move forward and offer that to our parents and students. Also, um, the Hartland Outdoor Environmental Education School, our fifth graders will be able to go to an overnight stay, and that will be on March seventeenth through Friday, March eighteenth. Also, we are doing an agreement with Ashland University for some clinical educational experience with our nurse. So she will have some nursing students working in her, um, office, and so that's new and exciting. We also are raising our substitute custodian position to fifteen dollars per hour to attract more substitute custodians. We also have some routine, um, items on the agenda. We have some field experience with Mount Vernon Alserine. We also have some personnel recommendations. And we also, um, had our head volleyball coach, Kami Vaughn, resign. So we wish her the best of luck in her future endeavors. And I also have the course planning handbook on the agenda. And Mr. Gary will be to answer any questions if you have on those decisions made by the teachers. And I also included in your board packet, our calendar for next school year. So the calendar committee, which involved several people, we worked together on the calendar, and then we posted it on the district's website, and that's for thirty days, and in January, the board will approve that calendar. And one of the nice things about posting it is to give multiple people the opportunity to look over that. So we have found a couple things already that we are in the process of changing. One is that January second is a holiday. So we have to move that from a professional development day to a day off, so we will make that adjustment. And then we had some staff asked to make an adjustment on time, um, for, um, some parent meetings. And so, um, they will be working with the staff on those. So that is going to be adjusted, um, in the next couple days. And then it will be posted for thirty days for public comment, and then it should be approved at the next board meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Susan on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
Second.
Rule call?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McClay?
Yes.
Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mr. Strebe?
Yes.
Okay, and then next, um, on the addendum is the board president consent agenda. And I have a couple items. At the, uh, special meeting that we had, we decided, um, to go with Ohio School Board Association, OSBA, again, to try to find our superintendent. And then we also talked about, um, how to look for an interim superintendent. So I appointed, um, Candy and Patty to be a committee to try to look at that. The, the next day, Patty called me and said that she would rather be taken off that committee. She felt that since she did not, um, run for the board for the next time period, she thought that maybe Charlie might be better suited for that, since he did run for the board. So we had Charlie and Candy do that part. And so would you like to talk about your little journey?
It was a journey. Uh, we, we had a, a pool of candidates available to us, and some were recommended, that held the proper licensure for superintendent. And, um, so Charlie and I arranged for them to come in, and we had some sit-down conversations. And, um, basically.
Did you make some calls to OSBA?
We did, they called to OSBA.
Somebody else?
Central Ohio, DSC.
DSC, yeah.
And, um.
Looking for available candidates?
Yes. So we did some, uh, due diligence around multiple checking points, and, um, some of you will be very familiar with, um, the, the person that we selected, because he was our superintendent once upon a time. So, uh, Jim Peterson is coming back to fill in as our interim. And he is very excited to be coming here and can't wait to get started. And, um, so that is who we have to present for, uh, a contract for, as interim superintendent. And the dates are, he will be starting January third. And it, the contract may not have to go to July thirty-first, depending on the search and, um, being able to, um, find a superintendent. So, we extended it to that date to make sure we had plenty of time to do a superintendent search.
So, uh, I have the motion to approve the contract with Ohio School Board Association for the superintendent's search to be done during the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year at eighty-five hundred dollars. And a motion to approve the interim superintendent contract for James Peterson, beginning January third, twenty-twenty-two, through July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. May I have a motion to approve those?
So move.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Mr. Strebe? Is it, sorry. Mr. Blanchard?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McClay?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
I just, now I just said Mr. Strebe, didn't I? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to committee reports. And Patty for Legislative Liaison, this is your last stint.
And I have nothing.
Oh, wow. Okay, that's the shortest report.
Took care of it, so that worked out well.
Okay, and Finance Committee, Charlie and I, but.
Haven't met in a while.
No. And, okay, Park and Recreation?
No.
Or, or Jim? And, uh, Fredericton Community Development Liaison, Susan?
Yes, so the four-three-oh-one-nine magazine is at the printer, so it should be coming out soon. I'm gonna give Sarah Otter a shout-out because she pretty much does that magazine on her own, and she does an incredible job, and she really puts her heart and soul into it. So really thankful that she's willing to do that for our community. We also talked about the National Honor Society will be coming to their January meeting to join them about doing some volunteerism. We also discussed, um, the organization of the Fredericton Community Development Foundation. Sarah did a nice job of using the whiteboard as well as some charts, and just kind of went through the different, um, positions as well as committees. Also talked about the Christmas walk and what was going on during that event. We, the finance report was done, it was a very typical month. We also had an operations report from Bruce Snow, and so they had a meet read at the council chamber. He also talked about the, um, streetscape and the landscapers, and he said to look at the lights by the splash park, because that's what will most likely be the lighting that they use. And he also, um, received the green light for a grant to dress up the overpass from ODOT. And he also, from House Bill one-sixty-eight, the village received funding for storm water. And that's pretty much it for the Fredericton Community Development Foundation.
Okay. Knox County Creator Center?
I was not able to attend the meeting, but, um, in looking at their agenda, it was pretty routine, what they had for the evening.
Okay, Administrative Reports. Mr. Caputo?
Sure, I'll go first, thank you. Um, Student Council's, um, looking at doing a little fundraiser this holiday season. Mrs. Greg and Mrs. Val bleed that crew up, and they're doing a little fundraiser, cookie decorating fundraiser. Last year we were not able to have canyon mowers in the building. Canyon mowers, they did not have the program, they did not allow their students in the building. Working with the university there, met Fed and McClay's, been working with them, they tend to coordinate that to accomplish a big program where some of our students who qualify in that program could get hooked up with a mower from canyon into a project. So kind of excited to see what, what that will look like this year. We're looking at volunteersmen in the elementary building. I met with my team leaders within the building, they gave some good feedback. A lot of the feedback they provided, um, kind of targeted kindergarten through third grade. Also, I had the opportunity to meet with my colleagues at the county level, so I'd say, conversations with them about how they handle, um, volunteers within the building, they're across the board, all the way from very little people to totally opening doors, unpacked. So I feel pretty comfortable that I'm having some test feedback from them. And others within the building have some setup so that we can look at having volunteers back in the building with them after the turn of the year. And we're looking at prospective volunteers, having a background check prior to entering the building. We're gonna have them look at doing a wellness check on their own, and I can monitor that. Gonna ask if they don't feel well that they don't come into the building for that day. And that if they're within close proximity with a student working, that they're aware of. Okay, so that makes sure we're protecting our kids and making sure that that is followed. Susan brought up in her question, we did not go on the fifth grade trip to Heartland last year. We are going this year. They did, really had very limited, Heartland was basically shut down last year. They had some things that they might do outside of Heartland, but we opted out of that. It weren't really of value to us. It's kind of like unfortunate for the kids last year, but this year we'll be able to start going again. And that'll be an overnight trip. As a recovering middle school principal, I'd always offer for any board member who might want to join it to supervise the middle school dance. I would also hold that offer true as long as background checks prove to be positive that current, former and current board members, I think I saw a couple of them, would be more than welcome to have you volunteer in the overnight trip. Definitely use another guy to help me chaperone. TBI's committee's been, done a real good job this year. I'm really impressed with how they've done. We've incorporated our professional development in with that group. We've also incorporated, we have our next reward, our quarterly rewards kind of targeting. And looking at students who are making those awesome steps forward. We have our next lunch with the principal. So I don't know why I think it's that big of a deal, but that's coming this morning. Brent and I have been in contact with universities in order to try to get some more tutors for our daytime tutors. To date, to my knowledge, briefly touched base with Brent, he has an update, if you'd let me know as well. We've contacted Ashley, we've contacted the NAS. Compliments to Marie Kennedy, she's partnered up with us very well. She does, you know, solid work with me, that's for sure, because I like the phone calls with her. Got nobody, one person? One person so far, which is kind of disappointing, but we'll keep on thinking of ways that we can potentially get those extra funds used wisely on our kids. Last thing I want to, a couple of last things I want to touch base on, subject continually, a shortage. I'm really happy, Mr. and Sarah and I, we're having a huge problem finding one-on-one aides for some of our most needed kids in the district. But I think at the turn of the year, we'll be fully staffed to help support those kids. Never had to do this before, but I had posted on our Facebook page a couple, several times in order to get some candidates. It's a chronic shortage, it's a problem. Hit Mount Vernon, last time I talked to a couple of their experiences, they're kind of one-on-one aides short right now. Met with the assessment committee to look at assessment systems. This is a fellow Mary Stark, look with that group as assessment systems that can be used for gathering and using high quality student data. I want to make sure that we're looking at data that we can look at that's going to need our teachers, help support our students, and improve their achievement from year to year. Not just their achievement, but their growth. And be able to be a system that's usable for pairs as well as administrators from a building level as well. Met with that committee, we reviewed three different vendors. Have systems set up so I can get feedback from them. We're, I'm gonna end up needing to move forward to talk with the administrative team and also that committee to see if we can get some more information from some of these vendors. There wasn't just enough time to get all the information we need from them, make, oh, we're well informed. So I'll keep you off first. Holiday season, kids are excited. Mrs. Claus was outside, looking at the grand playground today. It was just a magical day. I'm glad looking to appeal those opportunities. Rumors that maybe in, I'm sure. One last thing, talking about Heartland, thing that I don't have a contract yet. They have some new staffing at their Heartland, so we don't have a contract with them yet. But I just wanted to, wanted to know that it is ninety-five dollars per student. So that rate varies every year. We can, I'm bringing around seventy-five kids, seventy-four kids, we're talking, I don't know, worth seven thousand dollars. Partnering up with PTO or education and the students will also. You have any questions for me?
All right, I'm gonna try to talk about data with a close contact. So her, the health department, and I believe in the mask for remainder of this semester. It's been a busy, busy month at middle school and high school. On November twenty-second, we had Andy Fox and Billy Saunders from Tennessee come. And they spent the morning talking to our students. They brought, they brought the freshmen to the comments and they spoke to them for about a half hour, forty-five minutes. Then the next day, they brought juniors, sophomores, didn't junior, didn't seniors. But it was just a great, great presentation, really talked about life after high school. If you're not thinking about college, what are some of your options? It was also really eye opening for the students to say, hey, we've got this company, they're on the street, that hires services, that hires accounts, you know. So it was really eye opening, but I really liked the fact that they were talking about soft skills with the kids. You should have seen the look on these freshmen and sophomores faces when they said, you know, the biggest thing to look at when we call your high school is attendance. Their eyes were wide. You know, and then he started talking about cell phones. And, you know, if you're always on the cell phone at school, you're always gonna be on the cell phone at work. You're gonna be so, it's just, when they call soft skills went over, especially with the undergrads. You got more in-depth about the trades and different career opportunities as you talk to, as they talk to the juniors and seniors. So that was a great opportunity for our students. I just thank Andy and Billy for coming in. Late or early in November, late October, I started the scheduling process, believe it or not, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That led to the course handbook that you guys approved tonight, that I met with, and this is part of that, with each department individually and said, hey, what would you like? Do we want to add any new classes? Do we want to take away any classes that aren't popular? And the high school departments, they were more inclusively. We did take away some prerequisites that were there before we opened up some classes. We are adding Spanish five next year, because we've got some Spanish four kids that are juniors for the first time in a decade. So a lot of great things. We've also reduced school fees thanks to the extra funds in our English classes. And in Algebra one, because they're using an online program called Gally's. So great meetings. And what will happen is we'll do a scheduling night in January, where parents come in with their students and they talk to the different teachers. They will decide on the schedule. Late January, the students will come in and schedule classes. And then I'll meet with the teachers once again to decide, you know, who's teaching what next year. And that's how we do scheduling at the high school. Winter sports is well underway. Testing season's going on, the first two weeks back from Thanksgiving, we did the end of course air exam. So they wrapped up. Now is the high school, they're taking high school classes. So we do have some eighth graders here that will, will have to take, you know, the Algebra one semester exam. So those will be happening December twenty, twenty-first. The National Honor Society, I gotta give out a shout out to Mrs. McCoy. She's done phenomenal things with National Honor Society this year. They raised almost fifteen hundred dollars for Food for the Hungry, she's creative, we've got pies in the face. But we actually won the Greater Knox County area for the Food for the Hungry Drive. Our students, three of them were on the radio down at the NAS last Friday. So, and then there's some pictures in there, I think I got Mr. Davidson getting a pie in the face on there. It ended up being Mr. Nussbaum, Mrs. Wiener, and Mr. Davidson were the unfortunate pie in the face winners. I don't know if you had a chance, but last Friday, we had the Sounds of the Season Middle School Choir Band Concert. That was a success. Those students just did an awesome job. Again, Mrs. Bird, Mrs. Matt, great job with that. And if you missed that, or if you were so excited about that, that you want to see another concert, this Thursday at seven o'clock, we have the high school band and choir concerts on stage. And the last thing that just happened is Mrs. Art teamed last year and this year with Nationwide Children's Hospital, this Art's our social worker. They come in, they train our staff, seventh grade to ninth grade staff, about their science of suicide program, the SOS program. And it's part of the social emotional curriculum, just to give students tools, what to look for in their peers' lives and in their own lives of struggling. So that also was a success. And we'll be doing that with the ninth grade health students in January. So that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions?
No, but I want to thank you. You know, it was legislated, but I have been a strong proponent of the personal finance class. I was disappointed when it wasn't recommended to maintain when the legislature changed it. So I thank, thank you, and I look forward to it doing good things for kids.
This upcoming, well, it's the eighth grade class, so we'll be the upcoming freshman class, we'll end up happy to take that.
Yeah, that's good. I think it's great.
Okay, and I was at that band concert and choir concert. I think the coolest thing is watching the kids progress from, you know, sixth grade to the eighth grade. And, you know, they're just kind of learning it. And then by the time they get to eighth grade, you can really notice the difference.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty neat. Okay, how about Business Advisory Council?
I did not attend the last meeting, it was the second one they had in the world with ads. The cozes ignore the business meeting, I didn't even get any minutes, I don't know if they ripped me off already. So I didn't get any information from that. I was gonna say that Paul and Don are sitting back there, you guys should be playing rock, paper, scissors to see who gets this committee, because it is very educational. You make a lot of good contacts in the county. You'll get to see businesses that you didn't even know existed. So I'm very grateful to have had that opportunity to serve one after several years.
And Policy Liaisons?
I think it was time.
Okay, FEA?
Frederic Town Education Association participated again this year in the Christmas walk. We donated two thousand this year to the online auction. So we were excited and happy that we were able to do that. FEA and OC had our first joint Christmas party together this year at the Relection. It was well attended and we all had fun. We had an auction for mystery gifts, they don't think that they had any idea what they were getting. So thank you OC for seeing with us, that was kind of fun. We love you. I'd like to give a shout out to PTO. They've been very busy in November and December. And FEA always appreciates what they do for our students. They hosted a wonderful craft bazaar again, which I went and spent money at and bought candy and chocolate, very good. Always like that. And my husband was so excited to see that, comes, yeah, another wooden snowman. They also did the Fort Meyer fundraiser. And I got to help with unloading the truck and sorting all the poinsettias and the lavender trees. And so that was, that was a fun experience. So between all that fundraising, it's awesome that they, that a lot of time and effort that they put in for our students, to get those things organized. And recently, some of the purchases that you may not know that PTO is helping with is, they approved buying some new posters for the K five for the PIS that we've seen. They look adorable. And as you know, the second grade always puts on a performance. And they purchased a banner that can be used year after year that advertises the title of that. So really, it's been class things up for us. It's not going to be from class already, but it does move to that. So big thank you to PTO for your holiday efforts that you put on. And I do believe the next big fundraiser is going to be Stole of Bread, which I'm also looking forward to. And I would just, especially up to the community members here today, I would like to let anyone in the community that is part of an organization, you know, like the Christmas walk. FEA is always looking for ways that we can become more involved. We do have a grant that allows us to, like, donate items for auctions. We can't give you money or gift cards, but we can give you volunteers and we can give you items. Or provide items like we do for the summer reading. I have, like I said, a nice amount of money that I would like to spend helping community and students and things like that. So please feel free to contact me if anybody has any ideas, because we're looking to spread out a little bit more. And I would like to take a moment to thank Captain Hayward for working with you over the last few years. It has been fun getting to know you and our meetings that we've been able to have has always been very cordial. And I appreciate your professionalism. And I would also like to say a thank you to the outgoing board members. Jim, Charlie, you've been here for probably a third of my career, I believe. So, and Patty, I appreciate your service as well. Jim and Charlie, I had the opportunity to negotiate with you. And Charlie, you always bring a deck of cards and talk to us about playing those cards, but you never did. So now that you have some extra time on your hands, you know, FEA, you can always have a card in your hand. But thank you for your service. And it, I did enjoy negotiating with you too, so it was fun. All right, and a few last things for me.
Okay, and next is OC, Sharon?
And the only thing I have is, it was a lot of fun with the combined Christmas dinner. And I'd like to thank the board for the addition of aides, more aides if that helps. And also I'd like to thank Charlie and Jim and Patty. Thank you very much. And Susan, it's been fun. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have public participation. And we did have a couple applications, whatever, for that. So the first one is Christine Lindeman, and it's three minutes.
Can I talk fast before I get done?
Yeah.
So, good evening, I'm Christine Lindeman, and I reside at one one eight two one Yankee Street. Have one daughter who graduated in twenty twenty-one from Frederick Town and a daughter who is a fifth grader in the district currently. It's a little difficult to prepare to speak at a board meeting when public participation keeps getting moved. But regardless, I've prepared a few thoughts that may or may not have already been addressed and brought to light for more to see and understand. So I'd like you all to take a quick minute and look up at our school district seal, it's behind our board tonight. And there's two words up there, there's actually only two words up there, loyalty and truth. All five board members voted at a special board meeting last Tuesday to pay Susan Hayward her personal and improved vacation, even though board member Patty Miller stated that this is not common. for personal and accrued vacation, even though board member Patty Miller stated that this is not common practice. This occurred with no questions and no amount shared on what this would cost our district. I've specifically asked via email for what the cost would be to the district, only to get a response that we're working on those details. So you didn't know what the cost was, but you voted yes across the board. So help me to understand how this decision is being fiscally irresponsible. And why our school board, the elected, elected representatives that serve on the behalf of students, staff, and community, decided to forego standard protocol and pay Susan an unknown amount of money. It's widely known in the field of education that administrators and teachers do not resign mid-year. This is a breach of contract heavily frowned upon. And how foolish are we that we're allowing this to happen and also paying an additional bonus? During that same special meeting, restructuring the treasurer's office without the input of our own treasurer happened. Two board members who were leaving the board were assigned to write a job description for a new full-time position without the input of our treasurer. The board members, in my opinion, are in violation of bylaws, policy number oh-one-two-three, Code of Ethics, Code of Conduct, Elements M and N, state the following. Board members should refuse to become involved with micromanagement. School board members should emphasize planning, policymaking, and public relations rather than becoming involved in the management of the schools. End quote. So what kind of leaders think it's okay to restructure someone else's department without their input? Not the way that I think employees of F L S should be treated. I'm gonna skip the whole part about Lynne, 'cause I think that that'll just kind of, I shouldn't actually use her name here, but for fifteen years and her commitment there, I'm gonna kind of skip that because you guys addressed that. So the definition of loyalty is a strong feeling of support and/or allegiance. Do you think that our treasurer and her department sense a strong feeling of support or allegiance? Good grief, is this how we really treat people in a school district that throws out words like, once a Freddy, always a Freddy? That's our loyalty live with someone who's been in our community for a short time and is leading midstream? Or with those who have long-term commitment, not only to the district, but to our community, as a whole?
Okay, thank you.
A minute? I can't finish my-
That's three minutes. We actually have, um, would you like to speak to some of her questions? Patty?
Yes, I did love the response to email, but that's okay. Well, um, I worked with the treasurer's office multiple times. And I received, um, a firm, um, answer to your question about how much.
Was that before acting vote? I don't mind asking. Did you have that amount before you all voted yes or after?
It was yesterday. And she could, Heather, you sent me the email today.
I did. I did, this morning.
We had an estimate of how many days we were looking at, but we didn't have a complete amount because, uh, there's delay. And we do want to be as, um, close to the accurate amount as possible when we answer questions. So when Todd asked Heather, um, initially about, she was not in her office and did not have, um, access to all of her programming. And, um, again, it was a rough estimate off the cuff of seven thousand, seven hundred, seventy-two dollars. I had worked with Dawn Coleman Campbell on Friday, uh, looking for specific answer to your email query. And, uh, we came up with a, a different number that day than what Heather estimated, because we were, that was a over, um, as a rough off the cuff. But today, uh, we can give you exact amounts barring any sickness or unforeseen things happening in Dr. Hayward's family. So she has a balance of eleven point nine-three vacation days that she's earned and one point five accrued personal days that she's earned, totally thirteen point four-three days. So that, um, gives her six thousand, two hundred, eighty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. Partially, our conversation was, um, we excused Dr. Hayward at this point in our meeting. And our conversation was around if she takes the days that she has, um, she can leave today and never come back. And she's earned that time. It's still part of her benefit package. Having said that, she volunteered to not do that and work so that there's a smooth transition for the superintendent. We still have things that we're doing that need to be done in, in response to legislation and to, um, things that are moving very quickly, um, in education. I've never seen a time in education when things are happening so fast that you can't even stop and breathe to turn around in response. Especially at the district and building administrative level. Having said that, I feel like, uh, it would be irresponsible to, um, not allow Dr. Hayward to, um, support and help to tie up and shore up the transition for a new superintendent coming in as an interim. But it's still going to cost her, her days at Christmas time. She does not get the same breaks that the teachers and everybody get because she's contracted for two hundred and sixty-one days. She's, um, and she earns her vacation days. So if you work, uh-huh, so if you work in, um, private business, you earn paid time off. She's granted per her contract a number of vacation days. And, uh, she has not used them. She's, she's accrued them based on her time here. And we appreciate her staying and giving up that time to get things in place at least as much as possible in transition for Mr. Peterson coming in. I find it remarkable, given the climate and the opinion of people in this community who have been emailing us about this very issue, um, alleging that she's breached contract when she asked simply to accept her resignation and ask us to release her from her contract. Given the, the tenor and the tone and the temperature of people's feelings about Dr. Hayward in this community, I was, first and foremost, started praying for an answer for her and a way to be made through the Red Sea after the board candidate night. And so I'm speaking for me, I don't know about the rest of them. But when she told us that a district approached her, she did not go seeking employment elsewhere, regardless of what else you've heard, my advice to her was, uh, don't look back. There's nothing you can do here to change the opinion of the community members that are so against you and are so hostile towards your leadership, that you best be doing what's best for your family. I would not recommend you to stay. I would, um, definitely, um, suggest that you take advantage of this opportunity if it's something you want, you, for yourself and for your family. And at that point... I told her I was sorry for the way you've been treated and the way you've been spoken about in the community. Y'all must not have Facebook.
We have Facebook.
Oh, we have.
Then some of you-
She did, she's a hustler. She did this last time.
Having said that, um, that's why we agreed to allow her out of her contracts and to accept her resignation. Okay, so that talks, that gives you the money stuff. Did Heather know what we were doing the, uh, we came into executive session to, uh, deal with Mrs., uh, Dr. Hayward's contract at that same time? We were given written con, uh, resignation from Dawn Coleman Campbell. Up to that point, we hadn't had that. So we, um, acted business as usual. Some of the inform, we didn't know that we weren't supposed to act on her contract. When you don't have all the information you need to act responsibly, then you act typically. And it wasn't until I came in to talk to Mrs. Campbell, or really I came in to talk to somebody else and, and she let me know how unhappy she was. And I apologized to her for having her find out on Facebook what we had decided to do. I didn't realize that she had other, asked other things about, um, her resignation. And, um, so I was genuinely, we were generally sorry about that and didn't know. When you don't know what you don't know, you can't act. But you just, it's a, it was a business thing for us. We, we didn't realize that she had other issues that we weren't aware of. As far as why, um, the treasurer wasn't there and, um, wasn't included, uh, that would be violating, um, privacy rights and privacy information that's protected by law. And if you wanna ask her about it after the meeting, you feel free, but I'm not going to share that at this time. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. And we have another, um, public participation in Lynne Clivenger.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Clivenger. I graduated from Frederictown in nineteen ninety-one. My husband Andy and I have raised our family in this community. And our three children graduated from Frederictown. I currently have one grandchild attending Frederictown, and in the near future, two more will be attending. I'm currently employed by Frederictown Schools. This year, I received my certificate for fifteen years of service. My hope was to retire from Frederictown. And I was hired back in two thousand and six by Pat Miller, the school treasurer at that time, not to be confused with Patty Miller on the school board. This position was a four-hour day, five days a week, accounts payable, fiscal support. From what I can tell, this job had been in place since two thousand and two. Diane Clivenger and Darcy Long are the two ladies that held this position prior to me. And just to clarify, a comment that was made by Candy Gallagher. Dan Humphrey did not create this job for me as a favor after our family suffered a fire in our home in two thousand and nine. Dan was not even the superintendent then, it was Jim Peterson. Besides the fact that I had already been working for the school for three years before this happened. Just to clarify.
And I apologize for that. That was information that I was told, and I go on record as I apologize.
As a teacher, you should have researched that.
I have been through four superintendents in my time at Frederictown. The first three, I feel, did a fantastic job, far from mention. They supported our students, our staff, and our district. They had relationships with staff and students. You could talk to them, and they took care of situations when they happened. Did I always agree with them? No, I did not. But they did their job to the best of their ability, and for the most part, they were an asset to our school district. As for the fourth superintendent, I do not have that to say about her. I believe the atmosphere at our district speaks volumes. Lack of, uh, communication, lack of trust, not taking lame for anything, always pointing fingers, unfair treatment of employees, not responding to emails or phone calls, micromanaging our office and our school. Well, this could go on. This is an office that used to sit down and have meals together, celebrate birthdays together, have family Christmas parties. But she has made it so uncomfortable that this has come to a stop. We can't even have a conversation with each other without feeling like we have to watch every word we say. No one feels safe and secure in their job for fear of what she is going to tell the board we have done or what they will accuse us of next. I, myself, have been accused of being a leak in the treasurer's office. I have told that I should be fired. First off, anything that goes through our office is considered public record.
That is three minutes.
Keep talking, keep talking. Come on, sweetie. It's hard to keep it all out. Keep talking, she doesn't wanna hear the truth.
Okay, so the next meeting will be, actually a budget here, at, uh, twenty, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two at five forty-five P M. May I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I have a question.
So moved.
I'm, I'm asking for three minutes.
Okay, go ahead. Roll call.
Roll call. Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McClain?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Yes.